Would like to call to order the April 20th, 2015 meeting of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners. Welcome. It's good to have such a big crowd with us tonight. Would like to remind everybody, please turn your cellphones on silent or vibrate. And at this time, we have the presentation of colors by Girl Scout Cadet Troop 2975 from University City Methodist Church.
Prepare to post the colors. Post the colors. Would everyone please join us in the Fledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are happy to have with us tonight Youth Pastor Alan Tucker, who is son of Anita Tucker, one of our Cabarrus County employees that we're proud of for our invocation.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for letting us all be able to gather here safely, dear Lord. We pray that everything that goes on in this meeting, dear Lord, will take place in your will and that you will watch over and guide all the Commissioners and everyone that sits on the board to protect us and help us as a county, dear Lord. We love you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
And before they get away from us, we want our Color Guard to come back and introduce themselves and be recognized. Commissioner Poole will have a pen for each of you, to my right, your left. If you would just come to the microphone and tell us your name and where you go to school and perhaps your parents' names.
My name's Camille and I go to Harris Road Middle School. And my mom's name's Janine and my dad's name's Eddie.
Thank you.
My name is Deanna Morris. I go to Harris Road Middle School. My dad's name is David Morris and my mom's name is Denise Morris.
My name is Molly McLaughlin. I go to Harris Road Middle School. And my father's name is Mark and my mom's name is Michelle.
Thank you.
My name's Caitlin Decker. I go to Harris Road Middle School. And my mom's name is Deborah and my dad's name is Donnie.
My name is Anna Jones and I go to Harris Road. My mom's name is Tamika Jones and my dad's name is Drea Jones.
My name is Carly Castle. I go to Harris Road Middle School. My mom's name is Lisa and my dad's name is Chuck.
My name's Cela Crane. I go to J. N. Frees Middle School. My mom's name is Kimberly and my dad's name is Lonnie.
Thank you. We appreciate you being with us tonight and doing such a great job. At this time, we want to observe a moment of silence for some folks that we've lost in our community over the past several weeks. First of those is Coy Privet. Coy died on Monday, March 23rd, 2015. He was a local Baptist minister, served in various capacities over the years, was a former county commissioner that served on this board, as well as the North Carolina House of Representatives. Also, William Philpott Jr., which we all know as Billy. Billy died on Sunday, March 22nd. Billy was a Citadel graduate, and if any of you knew Billy, he certainly made you aware of that. He was a Citadel guy all the way through. He served Cabarrus County and our community in a number of different capacities, was president and CEO of Cabarrus County Savings and Loan. He contributed generously to the Salvation Army Board, the Rotary Club in Concord and Kannapolis, the Old Courthouse Theater, and many other organizations. Most of us knew him at his last job, which was as the Director of County Operations for United Way of Central Carolinas. Also, JW Mickey McGee. Mickey died on Friday, April the 10th. He was an Army WWII veteran, a president of Citizens National Bank, active member of St. James Lutheran Church, served on many boards of directors of organizations in our community, served as a city of Concord Alderman for several terms, and one of those as Mayor Pro Tem. He was also a member of the Concord City School Board. Many of you know him by his name on the park on Corbin Avenue that was named in his honor by the city. We also want to remember Representative Larry Pittman and his wife Tammy and their family as they experienced the loss of their son over the past week. So if we could just bow our heads for a moment in silence. Thank you. Okay, first item on our agenda is the approval or correction of the minutes, and I think all of you have a copy of those in front of you. Do I hear a motion regarding our minutes?
I move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The minutes are approved. Next would be the approval of the agenda, including the changes to the agenda, which are listed on page 161. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Move for approval.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The agenda is approved. First up on our agenda are recognitions and presentations. The first one is from Active Living and Parks Older Americans Month May Proclamation. And I will read that when I can pull it up here. Okay, this is proclamation, Older Americans Month, May 2015. Get into the act. Whereas Cabarrus County Senior Centers Advisory Council is committed to expanding the spotlight on Cabarrus County's older adults' needs, programs, and services to ensure the well-being of all older adults throughout the county; and whereas Cabarrus County older adults have continued a tradition of giving back some of their knowledge and experience; and whereas Cabarrus County older adults will continue to shape the county's policies, economic policies, social habits, and culture; and whereas Cabarrus County older adults will continue to provide hours of volunteer, community, and civic service; and whereas Cabarrus County will continue to focus on how older adults and adults with disabilities are taking charge of their health, getting engaged in their communities, and making a positive impact in the lives of others by emphasizing the importance of older adults to live with dignity in the communities of their choice as long as possible, presenting opportunities for older adults to receive the following services: home-delivered meals, congregate meals, caregiver support, preventive health services, personal care, transportation, job training, and elder abuse prevention; recognizing older adults as a valuable leader in strengthening the Cabarrus County communities to promote engaging activities for wellness. Now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 2015 to be Older Americans Month. We urge every Cabarrus County citizen to take time this month to recognize older adults and adults with disabilities and the people who serve and support them as vital citizens who greatly contribute to the community. And do I hear a motion from the board regarding this proclamation?
I'm jumping in. As liaison to the Cabarrus County Senior Center Advisory Council, I would be honored to move this forward as a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I would like to second it because they're talking about me.
Okay. Quite honestly, I think if we look very clearly at the definition, they probably cover a bunch of us. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is Cabarrus Health Alliance Exercises Medicine Month Proclamation. And Marcella Bean and perhaps some others from the Cabarrus Health Alliance are here to talk with us about that.
How are y'all? Good. Thank you so much on behalf of CHA, as well as the Racial and Ethnic Approaches to Community Health Grant, for recognizing May as Exercises Medicine Month. Jen West, who's the program manager of the grant, was not able to attend tonight, but I had her write something to share with you all and everyone in attendance this evening about really what this initiative is about and what we're observing during the month of May. Physical activity in the right dosage is a highly effective prescription for the prevention, treatment, and management of more than 40 of the most common chronic health conditions encountered in clinical practice. Exercises Medicine encourages healthcare providers to assess physical activity as a vital sign during all patient visit and to write personalized exercise prescriptions. The Cabarrus Health Alliance Reach Grant will be working with five local healthcare facilities to implement walking prescriptions and make referrals to opportunities to fill those prescriptions. In addition, Exercises Medicine encourages community members to talk with their doctor about becoming more physically active. Everyone, regardless of age, should start or renew an exercise program as an investment in lifelong health. Again, thank the board so much for recognizing May as Exercises Medicine Month.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I think she has done a good job of describing the proclamation that all of you have in front of you. Without reading it, do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Okay, we have two motions. We'll count one of those as a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes, and we're happy to do that. Next up, also from the Cabarrus Health Alliance, is National Bike to School Day Proclamation. And I think George Berger and perhaps some others are here to talk with us about that.
Good evening, Mr. Morris and Commission members and staff. You might want to read the proclamation after I get done because I'm just going to give you a few facts about Bike to School Day and where it came from. So in 1969, at the end of the '60s, the beginning in the 1970s, approximately 48, almost 50% of all public school children either walked or rode their bikes to school. And about 12% or 13% of kids were taken to school by personal vehicle, the rest being driven in school buses. By the beginning of this decade, things had totally changed and were absolutely flipped on their heads. So 44% of these students were being taken to school by their parents in personal vehicles, and only 13% were walking and bicycling to school. And so even worse than that probably is that even in North Carolina, in 2011, only 2.7% of students who lived within a mile of their school in elementary and middle schools were walking or bicycling to school. So almost every student was either being taken by a school bus or by their parents in personal vehicles. And of course, a lot of that was due to changes in school siting decisions, sort of the fear of crime or traffic risk, but mostly is because our lives have changed in modern times. So the convenience factor made walking and bicycling to school by kids so much harder for the parents to let the kids really do. What that's led to, of course, is public health concerns for increased amount of asthma and diabetes and chronic disease that end up manifesting in later life, and transportation-related issues, congestion, air pollution, fuel consumption, and probably most notably, for all of us in our busy lives today, around 14 or 15% of America's morning rush hour traffic is caused just by parents taking their kids to school. So we could reduce a lot of that. So one of the things that has happened as a result of transportation officials and public health officials getting together and starting to work on things together is the development of National Walk to School Day, which started in 1997. About three years ago, in 2012, National Bike to School Day was started. And it happens every May at the beginning of the bicycling season for kids. So we talk about bicycles and bike safety and bike skills, and Bike to School Day is in the spring, Walk to School Day is in the fall. One of the things that's really interesting is that we've gone in three years from having a very few number of schools that would bike, would have their kids bike to schools, or principals who would encourage their children to bike to school, to having over 1,000 schools that have done it in the last two or three years. In North Carolina, we went from last year having 41 events statewide to already having 49 events statewide, even with 16 days left to go before Bike to School Day. In Cabarrus County, we've got one school that's already signed up on the national website to do Bike to School Day. That's Arbrown McAllister here in Concord. But there are other schools in Concord and in Kannapolis both that are allowing their kids to either bike to school or walk to school as part of a Bike Walk to School Day. So thank you very much for recognizing Bike to School Day. And I've probably taken up more time than you need, so you don't have to read the proclamation. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you being with us, and that's your recommendation. I will read it. National Bike to School Day Proclamation. Whereas a lack of physical activity plays a leading role in rising rates of obesity, diabetes, and other health problems among children, and being able to bicycle or walk to school offers an opportunity to build activity into daily routine. And whereas driving students to school by private vehicle contributes to traffic congestion and air pollution; and whereas an important role for parents and caregivers is to encourage children to be aware of the challenges and dangers they face on their trip to school each day, and the health and environmental risk related to physical inactivity and air pollution; and whereas community leaders and parents can determine the bikeability of their community and identify any potential challenges to safe bicycling using a bikeability checklist; and whereas community members and leaders should include bike and walkability in the decision-making process and strategic planning process to enable children to safely bicycle and walk in our communities, and develop a list of suggestions for improvements that can be executed over time. And whereas children, parents, and community leaders around the country are joining together to evaluate bicycling and walking conditions in their communities, now therefore be it resolved that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 6, 2015 as National Bike to School Day in Cabarrus County, North Carolina, and encourage everyone to consider the safety and health of children today and every day. Do I hear a motion regarding this proclamation?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we adopt the proclamation because as a youngster, I used to bike to school to Arbrown McAllister. So that is a very good school. Same with where you live, is a very good school for that to happen.
Great. Do I hear? Here, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, and motion passes. Next on our agenda is from EMS, Cabarrus County Emergency Services Week Proclamation. And we're happy to have a number of our EMS folks with us tonight. And I will read that proclamation. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service; and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week; and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury; and whereas emergency medical services teams consist of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others; and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education, enhance their lifesaving skills; and whereas Americans benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly trained individuals; and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 17 through 23, 2015, as Cabarrus County Emergency Medical Services Week. So do I hear a motion to approve this proclamation?
So moved.
Okay, any discussion?
I was just, I was going to make a motion to approve, but I didn't get a chance. But I just wanted to say that these folks saved a dear friend of mine just about a month or so ago because of the extremely progressive and modern technology that they have in the ambulances. So I know what they do, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. I will add to that. Those are the people that you really don't want to call them, and you really don't want to see them pulling your driveway, but when you need them and they do, you certainly do appreciate it, and you provide a tremendous service. And I might add that our Cabarrus County folks have won a lot of national and regional awards, and we have a lot to be proud of, and we appreciate it. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, and motion passes. Next up is Soil and Conservation District Stewardship Week Proclamation. Dennis, did you have anything you wanted to say about that?
I'm actually going to ask Ned Hudson on our board if he would come forward and tell you a little bit about this week's observance. And I'm going to slide over and hand the clerk some bookmarks. It'll go across, and there's enough for everyone to have one.
Good evening, fellow Commissioners. We're glad to be here, appreciate this opportunity to talk a little bit about soil and water. Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District has been supporting visionary environmental stewardship since 1938. We exist as a district to encourage informed and responsible stewardship of the land and all its natural resources. Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District exists to encourage the informed and responsible stewardship of the land and all of its natural resources. This vision is echoed by the first goal in your strategic plan, namely, preserve and enhance the quality of life by addressing growth with sound public policies that sustain resources, provide high-quality services, and fund infrastructure needs. Respondents in the Cabarrus County 2014 Community Survey indicated that protecting water quality and the environment was one of the top four priorities for community issues that the community leaders must address. Our district's strategic priorities line up with the priorities of county citizens in the following areas: community conservation, conservation education, land use planning and conservation easements, and farmland presentation. Our approach to environmental stewardship is locally-led and voluntary. We combine local, state, and federal tax dollars and provide donations to provide financial and technical assistance programs in conservation. For every county tax dollar invested in our efforts, in recent years, we've been matching that dollar with another dollar. Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District encourages you to think about your personal responsibility to be good stewards of natural resources during the annual Soil and Water Stewardship Week celebration. The National Association of Conservation Districts, known as NACD, has proclaimed April 26 through May 3 as Soil and Water Stewardship Week, marking the 60th year of the national event. The 2015 Stewardship Week theme is "Local Heroes: Your Hard-Working Pollinators." The stewardship concept involves personal and social responsibility, including a duty to learn about and improve natural resources as we use them wisely, leaving a rich legacy for future generations. According to the Pollinator Partnership, birds, bats, bees, butterflies, beetles, and other small mammals that pollinate plants are responsible for bringing us one out of three bites of food. They also sustain our ecosystems and produce our natural resources by helping plants reproduce. Without the action of pollinators, agriculture economies, our food supply and surrounding landscapes would collapse. Being good students in our natural resources at home and in our communities is an important responsibility of each and every citizen. Our Conservation District Board and staff look forward to our continued partnership with you in improving the quality of life in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. And I will read this proclamation as well. This is Soil and Water Stewardship Week 2015 Proclamation. Whereas fertile soil and clean water provide us with our daily sustenance; and whereas effective conservation practices have helped provide us a rich standard of living; and whereas our security depends upon healthy soil and clean water; and whereas stewardship calls for each person to help conserve these precious resources, therefore I do proclaim April 26 to May 3, 2015, Soil and Water Stewardship Week. And do I hear a motion regarding this proclamation?
I make a motion that we approve this proclamation, and you're going to hear from me just a moment if I may interrupt. This is something that's very dear to my heart, and I actually have a book at home that is really very interesting. As we're starting our year of going to Walmart and all these places and buying your plants, ask if they're natives, because that's what we need to be replanning. We're losing our bees, we're losing our birds, because we are so bent on having pristine landscapes instead of putting natives in our yards. And there's lots of birds. Books that are out there that will tell you what is native to this area, that will attract those and help us preserve those precious things in our land.
Thank you. Do I have a second to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion with a comment also, since I'm the liaison to the board on the Soil and Water District. And I, like most people, did not know a lot about the soil and water until I became a Commissioner and became liaison to it. And it's amazing what Dennis and his staff do with land preservation and soil and water conservation. And they took me on a tour. They called it part of my orientation here a couple of weeks ago. I went out to a piece of property where it has a lot of wetlands on the backside of it. I don't know if any of you have been out there to see it, but it's a pretty good little hike off the main road. And we had about a two-hour walk that day, and I was really impressed that Cabarrus County sets aside land like that for preservation for wildlife, plant life, and then of course with the wetlands there. And it was just a beautiful piece of property, and I appreciate all that soil and water does. And Mr. Hudson, you've been on there a long time. I thank you for your honorable service to soil and water. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I would certainly add, as a beekeeper, I appreciate the emphasis on educating people about pollinators and bees. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, and motion passes. Next up is also from Soil and Water Conservation, and I think Dennis is going to come back up. And this is one of the things that we really enjoy, recognition- And this is one of the things that we really enjoy, recognition of regional winners in some of their contests.
So once again, we have winners, you've seen our local and regional, or local winners before in various contests. We've been through our regional cycle now, and we've got some folks that are preparing to go on to state level. So I'm asking all those folks to stand up. There's up to 19 folks. Stand up and come up. That means move. And I feel, in fact, there are some parents here and maybe a few school administrators or educators. And these contests wouldn't be possible without all these folks and certainly the district board. Ned served as the president of our state association a few years back and made education the theme of his presidency, as you would expect, as a retired school teacher. So, okay, I think I know just about everyone that's here. I'm sort of like the old mother in the shoe that has so many children she doesn't know what to do and can't keep up with all of them. I would just underscore, my colleague Hannah Kittenby with us tonight, but she's spoken to you the last two times that we've been here about our, the Conservation Field School at Clark Creek, and that was one of the places that Commissioner Shue referenced that we went to. Last night, when I was, my phone went off and I looked at it and there was a, we were under the threat of a flood last night. And the economic benefits of a wetland like Clark Creek just can't be underestimated at a time like this. Clark Creek eventually flows into Rocky River above Concord Mills, and if that creek wasn't there and the 200 acres of wetlands on it to hold back those floodwaters, they would just all hit Rocky River all at once. That would include waters from Highland Creek subdivision, which is the largest subdivision in the state of North Carolina. Winding Walk is another big subdivision that's gone in, and that watershed, it actually drains all the way from the ridge line up in Huntersville. It separates the Yadkin-Pedy River Basin from the Catawba River Basin. So we do in fact own 33 acres there. We are, that we're operating as a field school. It is already open by appointment. We've got school groups that are coming out. We don't have good parking and good access issues, so it's, we haven't done a big grand opening, but certainly if people contact us, we'll see what we can do to make them available there. We have the opportunity to work with everybody from homeowners to put backyard wetlands and rain gardens in their yards. So all this water that you see standing out in your yard, there are things that we can do to help that water go down in the ground rather than pond on the surface or run straight to the nearest ditch. There are state dollars available to cost share on that. That's at the one end of the scale. At the other end of the scale is a million-dollar restoration project that we completed several years ago behind Cox Mill Elementary School to take all the stormwater that had previously been directed directly into this 200-acre wetland and hold that water back on campus and run it through man-made filters that mimic natural systems so that the water is going in a lot cleaner. We're hoping that our efforts there will actually lead us to be able to successfully nominate the work there and that wetland for a national wetland award. I think it's got all the potential in the world to do that. So I've said in some, not as nearly as excited words, what some of these contestants have said to their posters and their public speeches and their essays. And then we've also got another group of folks that are Envirothon team members. We've got members of two out of three Envirothon teams that qualified at the regional event to go on to the state event that happens this coming weekend in Alamance County. And they're studying in addition to wetlands and aquatics, forestry, soils, wildlife, and current environmental issues. So we have 19 of these folks that have advanced to the state. Let's see who's with us tonight. In fourth grade poster contest, Jack Lewis from Fred L. Wilson Elementary School, not sure, he had a soccer game and I would bet that it maybe got rained out, but anyway, I thought he might get here in light of the rain. And in the sixth grade, that contest is third, fourth, fifth, and sixth, so at two grade levels, fourth and now sixth, they took first place. So at sixth grade, Ava Dell from Harris Road Middle School, you already had a whole slew of Girl Scouts from that school. And did Ava make it tonight? Nope. Okay. And then in our annual computer-designed slideshow contest, Kendra Barnes, who came in second place at that, this is Kendra here. Congratulations. In our annual public speaking contest, this one's been going on for 46 years, phenomenal that we've been, that contest has been running that long. We took both places in that. There's a seventh grade and an eighth grade level competition in that, and both of those winners came from Cabarrus County this year. We have, and you've seen Tyler Pickett before, but Tyler Pickett, and I don't see parents. Are they back in the back somewhere? Okay, they're being, I saw a hand go up, and some siblings. And then in the eighth grade, Priya Patel from J. and Freez Magnet School. And there's some parents back there, so yes, okay. And then the Envirothon teams that I mentioned. So Cannon School, none of them were able to be here tonight. They actually came in first place at the regional contest. That's, I'm thinking the first time that we've ever had a team come in first place at that. And then from Central Cabarrus High School, the Enviro minions is their team name that they chose for themselves. Maddie Kennedy, I didn't see Maddie tonight. And Tiffany Lampersky. And Jonathan McCormick. Malin Patel, Priya's brother. They're keeping a lot of good stuff going on in the family there. And Kelsey didn't make it either. Kelsey Seitz was also on that team. And their advisor is Courtney Kavanaugh, who is a lacrosse player par excellence and probably tied up in something like that extracurricular activity this evening. And then the other team that is advancing, the FFA team from Northwest Cabarrus High School, they've been at this, I should also say, the team from Central Cabarrus, this is their first year out and they're already qualified from the state. They're absolutely awesome and have knocked themselves out this year and made Hannah and me very proud of them. The team from Northwest Cabarrus High School has been at this for a while. It is again, an FFA team, also doing an outstanding job with that. And we have with us tonight Cheyenne Church. Cheyenne is going to the Resource Conservation Workshop that we sponsor each year at NC State, so she'll be spending a week there in late June. And Hannah on our staff went to that workshop. That's part of why she's now working for our district. And Hannah and I will be down there serving as counselors, so we're looking forward to that weekend in a number of ways. Monica Hilton. Let's see, Maddie Sebo. Cory Sheets. His brother was on this team several years ago. And Jacob Sykes. And where did Jenna Hoover go? Can you stand up? Thank you. Jenna is our advisor and teaches agricultural education at Northwest Cabarrus High School. And is a graduate of Northwest, so very lucky to get back to her home school so quick in her career. Did I miss anyone? Awesome. Thank you all so much for coming. If you will exit to your left, Commissioner Poole is standing over there. For those of you that haven't gotten a county pin before, she will be glad to give you one of those. Thank you so much again for your time this evening, for your support throughout the year in so many ways. Hannah and I would love nothing more than to be back here after the state contest with a few state winners to introduce to you.
Great. We are looking forward to that. Thank you very much and congratulations to all of you and what you're doing for our community and the recognition you're getting from a regional area. Next on our agenda is a special recognition, and Jonathan Marshall is going to present that for us.
So we've talked a lot about people tonight, about services, had a number of proclamations about exercise. We're about to say happy birthday to a building. This is the 25th year anniversary of moving into this building, the Cabarrus County Governmental Center. There are probably very few employees who worked in our other offices and then moved into this building and have been here ever since. Mike Downs, Pam Duwan, I are three of them. I don't know if Londa's here. Londa, I believe, was one of the first people who moved in here. We moved in in April of 1990. And to give you some perspective, the census conducted that year at about that time found 99,000 people in Cabarrus County. The most recent estimate, which I think you've seen, shows 192,000 people in Cabarrus County. But during that time, this has been our primary source, or primary office for, and center of Cabarrus County government. We've done some remodeling. There's been a lot of carpet changes, there's been a lot of painting, but really, for the most part, the offices have remained the same over that time. And it's, I think, a real testament to our, what was our general services staff, is now our infrastructure and asset management staff for how well they've kept this building up. I could not go back and begin to recount the names of all the people from facility services who have helped take care of this building. But I believe you all know Paulette Watson pretty well. If you don't, she will introduce herself and then some. Tammy Horton, who's a little bit quieter, and Wardell Scott are currently the staff who are working in this building, and we appreciate all the care they take of it. The photograph that's up there right now was provided to us by Jim Ramsor, the council member. Actually, we discovered that because I believe Megan saw it first when it was featured in the paper, and she contacted him about us using this photograph and some others, which we have on display in the multipurpose room. In addition, we have a newer photograph that Megan and her husband took using a drone. Of course, technology has changed a little bit in 25 years also, that you can now send small unmanned aircraft up, warning the Concord police before you do so, by the way, to take pictures like this. And they were able to provide this picture that shows an updated view of this building. But most importantly, when we talk about history, we've invited some special guests to be here tonight. I told them I was going to invite them to come forward and make some comments. Most of them have said they've declined, but I'm sure if you encourage them, they'll come forward. Before I list their names and ask them to do that, I'm going to note that there is, in our multipurpose room, a cake to honor this occasion. Our chair asked, if this was a birthday party, did that not mean there was going to be cake? And there is. It's a unique cake. Mr. Downs, please tell me who made that.
Ron Stipe.
Ron Stipe made a cake that is in the form of this building, so you need to see it before it gets cut. But that will be after the meeting. We invite everyone down to enjoy that with us and have a chance to visit. But tonight, unfortunately, one of the commissioners who was on the board was unable to make it, Martha Melvin, as well as Mike Ruffin, who was the county manager at the time. But we do, we have the honor this evening of having the chair of the commission at that time, James Lentz, with us, the vice chair Giles Moss, William Hamby, who was on the board, and Bill Simmons. Mr. Simmons joined us from Florida just for this occasion to come back, I hope, and get to see some of the community and the changes that have happened since he was on the board. But those other names, I think you're going to recognize because they have continued to be active in this community and continue to be good stewards of what they started and worked on so many years ago. And then in addition, Dennis Yates is with us this evening, the architect for this building. And I wish he could hear how many times people walk up and say, is this building, guessing that it's no more than 10 years old? So it has been timeless, it has served our needs very well, and I think that's a credit to what was Yates Kreitzberg at the time and is now Yates Kreitzberg Hughes Architects here in Concord. So with that, I'm hoping that they will take the opportunity to come up and give some of their comments about this building and about the process of getting it built. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Gentlemen, we would be so pleased if you would at least come up for a photograph and then say just a few words while you're up here, but we would like to get all four of you, all five of you, including the architect, Dennis Yates, to come up for a photograph. And while you are doing that, being one of those, one of those guys that do remember when this building was built, I think it took, it took a lot of forethought, a lot of courage and knowledge and wisdom for you guys to step out on a limb and undertake this project at that time. And as Jonathan has so well stated, it has served us well, so we owe you all a debt of gratitude. Thank you for having the forethought to build this facility for Cabarrus County.
Thank you. There was never any really organized opposition to this building. We were very fortunate. We did catch some of the term pink palace a little bit later, but we overcome that too. But I want to remember one thing, I'll tell you one thing that happened during the building. This, all the, there was buildings all through here, and right out to the right there, there was a Gulf service station. We had tore all this down. For some reason, we could not grasp that property. But anyway, finally got it, and this was pretty well underway then. And one day they called me, I was out at work somewhere, I can't remember where it was, and they said we've had to stop the building. They had stopped all the work that was here. And I said, why? He said, they found some asbestos. Well, I'm the asbestos man. So I said, where is it? And it was in the, in the service station. And it was just a piece about this long, and it was on the stack, went up to the chimney. I got me a ladder, I got it, I pulled it down, I put it in a bag, and out the door I went. But they did, somebody from the state called me, and I said, no, it wasn't asbestos, it was magnesium. And magnesium was not supposed to be as bad. But anyway, I am really proud of this building. A lot went into it, and I'm really proud of Dennis. Dennis did a terrific job. He was stepping, walking on tiptoes all the time this is being built, because it was a difficult situation. And thank you for having us.
Thank you. And would any of the rest of you have anything you'd like to say?
The only thing that I would say is that, at the time we built it, it was hard to visualize what this building was going to look like in today's world. And again, what Jim said, Dennis, they designed a fantastic building, and it's turned out great as y'all use it. And there's been a lot of important votes in this building, but I think it really added to the city of Concord, not only to Cabarrus County, but we had so many different projects going on with the airport, Cottle Creek, and our jail that we had built that's gone. But anyway, this building really did expand the vision of what Concord was going to look like down the road. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Well, I'm the baby on that, on that particular Board of Commissioners. I was, I think, 30 when I became a commissioner, and I really helped complete the work that Martha Melvin and Jim and Giles and Billy Hamby did, along with Ken Payne. And it was probably one of the most interesting experiences of my life to date. And I've been in a lot of places and worked in Europe, but I really enjoyed working as a commissioner. And it's a tribute to Jim, hi, and his leadership and unfailing making sure this got done and done right. And I do want to compliment him on that. Jim?
And I would like to take just a moment and congratulate Dennis Yates and introduce him to the board. I'm sure you're all familiar with him, but his work here and the unique work he has done here in Cabarrus County has been extraordinary. And if you see this building, a photograph of this building, you don't have to ask where it is or what it is, because it is unique and uniquely suited to our community.
Thank you.
These are the nicest things ever been said about me or this building. I have a couple of comments. First of all, I would like to thank Jim Lentz and his group at the time for picking or choosing to trust a local guy rather than someone out of the county or the city. That was very important to us. It has helped our careers very much. I've been blessed and privileged to have worked on many, many projects, but very few of them, can I say, have been as interesting and as controversial, but yet as fulfilling architecturally as this project. Couple of things that you may not know, that everyone might have forgotten, that I think are fun to bring back up. If you remember back in the late 80s when this project was conceived and the commissioners did want to do it, but there was really a tremendous amount of diversity about this project. This project in its own way polarized the community. Either you were for it or you were against it. You were for progress for what the county could be in the future, or either you really didn't want to embrace that. It really was a very polarizing project. And I can say, of all those that I've been privileged to do in almost 40 years of architectural practice, this one by far and away is the most controversial. Very interesting thing here, because of the politics at the time, I guess, it was really not an awful lot of input by the commissioners. The only two- The only two folks that I could really get to spend as much time with me on a day-to-day basis of helping conceive this was Martha Melvin and Ken Payne. And Martha Melvin, bless her heart, she was one of the nicest ladies I've ever met in my life, and really poured her heart and soul into helping conceive and develop this building, certainly along with the folks in the back. They really had a lot to do with it. But on a day-to-day basis, those people chose to be the most involved. Probably the person that really became the genesis of concept for this building was, I think, then acting manager Charles McGinnis. I think Charles was acting at the time. Is that right, Jim?
He was actually, though.
Okay. He was manager, so I could find no friends here to really help me do this very much. So I went to Charles, and Charles told me two or three things that I remember very well, and I would like to repeat for you. I said, what should this be? He said, well, just make sure that it's a timeless design and that one day in the future, a citizen unknown could use this facility as a public gathering place of which to announce their candidacy of president of the United States as a member of our county, as a citizen of our community. And I thought that was pretty good. So you can kind of see the genesis of what's the way it is. I personally believe that each and every citizen of a county and a state and a country are extraordinarily important individually and collectively. So when you really look at the design, it's really quite simple. And the simplicity of it is that in the center of this space, essentially where Mr. Moss is standing, is the very center of this building. And everything geometrically radiates and emulates from that point. Why is that there? To simply signify that one citizen of our county is always the most important. And each of you on this commission or any board that sits is embraced in contributing to the notion of intimacy, that you have a responsibility to listen or respond to that individual person. So when you see the round room, you see the skylights, it's really about the notion of one person is the most important, you, the governing board, is the next important. And there's a tangibility, but yet isolation between you, the board, and the citizen with the rest of the building as its public and government-supporting entities for the building. So that's really what's the way it is. To add one more comment to Mr. Lentz's comment, this building was conceived to have been 25,000 square feet. It was not to have had parking decks. It was simply been built, as Jim said, on this site. Unfortunately, when I started doing technical surveys on this end of the building was the old White's grocery. And unfortunately, it hadn't gotten pushed in rather than hauled off. So it became a computation to determine that it was cheaper to excavate than it was to try to remediate. So in essence, that really became the genesis of why there are parking decks on this plaza. And for our good friends EMS there, the public plaza out there is designed to hold a 75,000-pound fire truck. Thankfully, that hasn't been tested, to my knowledge, but you're welcome to go truck. This is a port-in-place concrete building, which today, if we designed it today, it probably wouldn't be that. It would probably be steel-framed. And I think as long as you, as government, wished to keep this building, structure of this thing would last forever and ever and ever. And I, too, am very proud of it because when I sit in the pews that were designed 25 years ago, they still look as fresh today as they did then. So I also commend the county for taking care of what was entrusted to them. So it was a great honor for me to have participated in the design. No design is ever conceived by one person. It is completed by all, and I'm proud to have been a part of that process. So thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
We appreciate all of you being with us.
May I just add one thing to his comment about this room?
Yes, ma'am.
And it's very significant, from what he said about that spot where Giles is standing. If we stand there, everybody hears us. It just echoes. And that's almost like that one citizen is being heard, as you said. Yeah, it's wonderful.
Thank you.
You do need to take a photo, if you don't mind seeing it. And if the current commission, please stand with Paulette. Just right here, right in the center. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you all for being with us.
I will mention again that we do have cake for everybody in the multipurpose room at the end of this meeting. And I understand it's a rather large cake, so if there's some people watching on television, if you'll hurry down here, you might can get here in time to get some cake also. Commissioner Minnick, I must say I'm a little disappointed at your comments. I fully expected you to be that citizen that Dennis Yates was talking about that was going to announce their candidacy for the presidency tonight.
Next week.
Next week. Okay. Next item on our agenda are informal public comments. And I have a card from Price Crutchfield.
Yes, that's on here also.
Okay. I'm a little bit concerned about something. I'm in a religious minority here in Cabarrus County. I'm also stupid, okay? I'm in a religious minority here in Cabarrus County, and as such, I've been a victim of some religious stratification. And the police and the sheriff's department, they think I'm a terrorist. Several times, sheriff deputies have come and tried to arrest me over Mount Pleasant. And I don't know, I made an inquiry. I wanted to start a mosque in Mount Pleasant and spread religious diversity in the community, have some communication, if you will, in the different various religiosities and so on and so forth. The police in Concord in the past, I have a hard time trusting them because they have lied under oath. A police captain, Scott Newell, he lied under oath to Judge Hamby on me. He told Judge Hamby that I came into restaurants and harassed his family. And ever since then, a lot of people think I harass people's families and scare people's kids and do that kind of thing. And I don't. Maybe it's because I have a strange religion to them. I just feel that mass incarceration and social penary, if you will, criminal penary on the part of the police, is just alive and well. When you're with the police in Concord, you can molest kids at our schools. Over at Jay Robinson School, there was a police officer that was arrested for a sex crime against a minor, allowed to make a plea bargain three years. They don't even try it in Concord. It's a secret proceeding in Raleigh where he's allowed to make a plea bargain and not register as a sex offender. I, on the other hand, if I say the S-word to the police, there has to be a full atonement. And we know the police have never said the S-word on the sidewalk, much less been arrested for it. And there's too many things that really don't add up. Seventeen arrests, and I defy anybody at this county commission or at the police department or anybody else to show where I've ever harmed a soul. Can't be done. Can't show a damaged party. Can't show someone that would say, he violated life, liberty, or property. Can't be done. But yet, the 17 arrests, and many, many times in court, they had no choice but to find me not guilty and dismissed because the court knew that these are just actions of the police over aggressive. They don't like Muslim people. I make no bones about it. Concord is a place that does not like Muslim people. They think I'm a terrorist. And my position is, if you're going to invade somebody, invade Mexico. Right here at our borders, thousands and thousands of narco-terrorists cutting people's heads off, you don't see the United States of America invading because it's a democratic country. No, it's not a Muslim country. They would have already attacked, especially if I would have lived there. But unfortunately, they're trying to run me out of Concord because they don't like my religion.
Thank you. Our next card is Larry Marlowe.
Commissioners, I'm Larry Marlowe. I live on Odell School Road. I just thought about this tonight. The city of Concord annex voluntary, I think it was 275 acres across from where I live. Now, they, I think, the people that bought it lost it bankruptcy, so another company bought it. And right now, the property was annexed into the city. And right now, they're, and the only reason I'm bringing this up is for schools, that I've never heard you say anything about needing more schools besides what you got, you know, building them. But they are going to put in, on 275 acres, they're proposing 551 lots. And the way the schools used to figure, seven-tenths of a kid per house. And I don't know if it's still like that, but 10 years ago, it was like that, so I don't know if they changed it. So that's the potential for a lot of more schools and kids. And since you're doing Odell right now, and it's a lot of money, you might, if y'all don't know anything about this development evidently, you might consider building Odell bigger because you're going to have to house them kids somewhere. And I probably shouldn't say this, but the city-county planning board tomorrow night, across the street, is having a meeting at 6 o'clock. So anybody who would like to come and have your opinion, feel free to join us. Thank you very much. But I really may want to bring it up because schools, I have never heard y'all say anything about knowing about this. And if you do, it's good. If you don't, then you might start thinking about Odell building it bigger. Because they're going to be seven-tenths, ever have many kids, that's more than 300-some kids. Plus, you figure about 1,500 more cars coming out on Odell School Road you can't get out now. But we don't have that much. But I'm not moving, so I'm sticking where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marlowe. Those are all the cards that I have tonight. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in public comments? Okay, next on our agenda is our consent agenda, and all of you have that before you, items that we have discussed in depth at our work session. Do I hear a motion in regards to our consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
A second motion.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. Next item is new business. First on our agenda is Margie Bukowski from Cabarrus Economic Development Corporation. And Margie has a presentation for us.
Thank you. Chairman Morris, Commissioners and County Manager Downs, thank you so much for letting me come up here tonight to ask you to consider an incentive grant for Project Roy. Project Roy is Pepsi Bottling Ventures headquartered out of Raleigh, North Carolina. We are so excited that Pepsi has been looking at a piece of property in Harrisburg. This is a big project. It is an expansion and a consolidation of several different counties coming together. And we're going to have jobs from the Midland facility, Charlotte facility, and the Statesville facility, condensing into this brand-new 200,000-square-foot building. So approximately 176 full-time employees will be coming to this brand-new facility, which we would like to get started on soon. The average salary is going to be in a range of $38,000 to $42,000 a year. This is going to be an investment of $12.5 million on the part of PBV. That is including a $12 million for the building and $500,000 in equipment and M&amp;E. We are asking that you would consider a five-year tax-grant-back incentive for PBV in which the county could go ahead and, when they pay their taxes, the incentive would be granted back to them. I also have tonight with me the executive vice president of PBV, and Mr. Matthew Bukarati is here. Should there be any questions about this project?
Thank you, Ms. Bukowski. Any questions, Commissioners? Okay. At this time, we will hold a public hearing to give anyone in the audience an opportunity to speak on this request. So I call the public hearing open. Is there anyone would like to speak for or against this economic development incentive If not, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners, what would be your pleasure?
I will make a motion to approve the economic development grant between Project Roy and the Cabarrus County and to authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the board, subject to review or revision by the county attorney.
Great. Do I hear a second to that motion?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? I will just, my personal comments are that Pepsi has been a valuable part of this community for quite a few years with their facility in Midland. They have contributed greatly to our community. There have been a lot of Pepsi employees that have been involved in a lot of civic activities in our community. And we are just so, I personally am so happy that you have chosen another location in Cabarrus County to expand into and, I think, consolidate some additional facilities. It would have been, it could have easily gone the other way. Could be they decided to expand this facility in another county. So we appreciate that you have been excellent corporate citizens and look forward to working with you going forward. Is there anyone else that has comments before we vote? If not, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda are appointments to boards and committees. First are appointments to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. An application has been received from Annette Swick to serve on the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. She has been approved by the Regional Almsman. If appointed, she will need to be appointed to an initial one-year term. And I will add that there are currently seven vacancies on that committee, if there are folks out there that are interested. Do I hear a motion to approve Ms. Swick?
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. Next item is Cabarrus County Senior Centers Advisory Council. Resignations have been received from Martha Keicher and Annette Young. By resigning, they leave two unexpired terms ending December 31, 2016. It is requested that they be formally removed from the Cabarrus County Senior Centers Advisory Council roster and appointments be made to fill their vacancies. So first, I would entertain a motion to remove them from the roster.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. And now, I would accept a motion for appointments to fill their vacancies.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion if we fill those two vacancies.
Okay. And do you have two?
Yes, would recommend Norval Johnson and June Musi.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to fill those two vacancies with Norval Johnson and June Musi. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes. Next item is appointment to the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority. An application to serve on the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority has been received from Dana Ritchie. The authority meets on an as-needed basis, and the county attorney serves as the contact for this authority.
I'd make a motion to accept Dana Ritchie as the new board member for that committee.
Okay.
The authority.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Motion passes. Thank you. And at this time, we would accept general comments from Board members, if anyone would like to report. Commissioner Donahue?
I wanted to pass that. I am, as I said, the liaison for the Advisory Council, and we met today, and there's some information I did want to pass on to you guys. This is a presentation that was done for the House Committee on Aging, as well as copies of who's on the different committees for that, and I wanted to pass both of those on to you. And then I was encouraged to make sure that everyone was aware of the Cheerleader Showcase and Silver Arts Follies that will be singing, dancing, comedy, and music by persons 50 years and older. This event is April 30, 2015, at 6:30 PM at Concord Middle School, and there is a $5 charge for adults and three for children. And this plays in with the Cabarrus Senior Games, and so they would love to have the public join them at that event if possible, so please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have comments to make? I will say that it was my pleasure to be out for the opening ceremony for the Senior Games a couple of weeks ago, and that is definitely a very energetic group of people, and was able to see some of the dancing and cheerleaders. So that is certainly a wonderful event in our county that I think goes on for a month or more. Being no other comments, once again, I'll remind you about the cake in the multipurpose room. I would entertain a motion to recess this meeting until 6:00 PM on Monday, April 27, when we will meet at the Cabarrus Arena and Events Center for a special meeting.
No approval.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And we stand adjourned.